Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Okay, to begin the meeting here, we're going to execute the minutes, approved minutes, meeting minutes from February 27th.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye. It's approved. Okay, next will be the minutes from March the 4th.
Is that motion?
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye. It's approved. Okay, next will be the minutes from March the 4th.
Is that motion?
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye. Okay. There's an under leak. And what we can do is, is Heidi, if we could have Heidi come up for the financials. Morning.
Morning.
Financials today include revenue certifications for the Department of Job and Family Services, Workforce Investment Fund, and the Community Development Local Revolving Loan Fund. Purchase order to buyer Chevrolet for the purchase of a 2014 Impala for the Building Department in the amount of $20,566.60. Travel request for the Department of Job and Family Services. Payment to Gardener Service Company for heat exchanger replacements for the large boilers at the Department on Aging in the amount of $14,009.51. Payment to Lebanon Ford for the purchase of a 2014 Ford Interceptor vehicle for the Orner's Office in the amount of $25,141. Payment to Bergeran and Associates for the 16-site telemetry system for the Department of Water Resources, lift stations, in the amount of $41,727.40.
And then on that, the coroners will go to auction and the building department will stay for an auxiliary.
Correct.
Okay. All right, if we could have a motion on that.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye. Motion, financials approved. Okay, the next item that we're going to have on the agenda is Office of Community Economic Development. Morning.
Morning. I'm here today because Stephen Douglas is going to refinance for a better rate. There's no money taken out, there's no changes or any interest of names that make their name in their mind, or everything else remains the same with the loan.
Okay. Are you familiar with Stephen Douglas?
I mean, we are.
Just briefly.
They're really, yeah, really need to make automation equipment. That's a great place to go or visit if you get the time.
Yeah, we know.
High tech stuff.
Really quite interesting.
Okay, if we could go ahead and read number four.
The Office of Community Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute this ordination agreement real estate mortgage for key bank national association and Stephen Douglas Corporation Holdings LLC is refinancing their revolving loan fund loan.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye. Motion stands approved. Thank you. And number five, we have the sheriff's office.
Engineer.
I guess I got a different engineer, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay, engineer instead.
Yeah.
Joe Cottell, or somebody from the engineer's office. Morning, Joe.
Morning. How you doing?
Oh, first item we have on here is for the resolution to order the replacement of Fowler's Mill Road Bridge. We've talked about this before, you already did the community necessity for it. It's over in the mill area, they're just north of 322 Mayfield. And so this is to sign the resolution to order and to execute the cover sheet and the second bid date, and there was a bid in the paper. And in the past, I did say that there was, we've talked to some residents down there and hey, wish we had been involved, and there was, everybody was on board. We did, after the plans got done, we talked to some property owners down there, they had a couple of concerns, and we've addressed that, and we've come full circle and made some changes to the, to the plans as a result of that. And they've signed off on the work agreements for where we're getting out, so, you know, we're moving forwards, everything's good. But I just wanted to be transparent in that before there was no issue at all, and then we've had quite a bit of dialogue in the last couple of weeks, but...
What part of, what part of Fowler's Mill is this? This isn't where we had the single lane and we changed it to the double lane?
No, 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 no. This is all the way to the other end, all the way by Mayfield.
Oh.
The first, first, the first tip.
It's on the southern.
First tip north of Mayfield Road.
First tip.
Yeah, right by the mill.
Anyway.
Will that be kept open to traffic?
No, it will not.
It will be completely closed?
Yes, yes.
And how long do you think that's going to happen?
The, the project is, the contractor has 30 days to do it. It's a larger structure and dealing with some water because of the backup from Beaver Dam and stuff like that, so normally I'd say they could do it in two and a half to three, but I'd give them the full 30 days.
Sure.
Two and a half to three weeks, but I'd give them the 30 days, just because of some of the, you know, problems dealing with water that they'll have to have. But it is a precast structure, so that's why we build these out early.
Like boxes, concrete box, like pipe that you put in?
Yep, yep, yep.
Cash users.
Right, so, so it does, you know, the construction rate is so much faster than conventional, well, the old conventional, whether you have beams or what have you. But that's one of the reasons why we put these out early, because a lot of times if you don't get these out early, then the precast factories get logged, and then next thing you know, we're into, you know, September, October to put these in the ground, and then school's back in, and it's very disruptive. So that's why we try to jump on these precast boxes as soon as we can.
That's smart.
But that's the project in a nutshell.
All right.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Question, will this detract from the historic value of that area?
No, actually, the structure that's in there right now is not a historic structure, it's a three-cell wooden box that was put in, oh, I think it's less than 50.
A lot of years ago.
Yeah, less than 50, but it's not part of the historical district. In fact, one of the complaints that people had out there was it's so narrow that when they want to walk across and there's cars coming, there's no room for them, so this one's actually a little wider, and it'll be natural looking because it's a precast box and the way, you know, the ground's filled in around it, you really don't see much of the structure at all.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
They won't hurt the mill there, then?
Oh, no, it'll have no.
There's the business, and then there's the Avon Gardens across the way, Avon Gardens, if they've gotten further.
Yeah, we won't be affecting it at all, yeah. And even so, too, the detail in here is very short, you know, so when you're dealing with traffic, too.
They've got to get it taken care of.
Yeah. And we're, you know, obviously trying to do it while school's out, so it won't affect that.
Okay, if we could read number four.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number 14-042 to order the replacement of Fowler's Mill Road Bridge, structure number 108-018 in months in time. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the cover sheet, the specifications will fit for the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Wednesday, April 2nd, 2014, at 2:30 p.m. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on March 13, 2014, and on the county website.
Some moved.
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye, motion stands approved, thank you, Joe. Number six, then.
Yeah, the next item I have on here is the approval for the architect contract for the addition down in El Grande. I guess Laura's reviewed this, and it's been through the channels, and it's kind of a formality where we come with that project. We've talked with David Mason of Wolf Mason several times, and he's excited about the project, and he's come up with some good ideas to keep the cost down, and to stay modest, so we're very pleased with him.
And on that, did we follow the same process like we did with Department of Disabilities with the bidding process, far as qualifications?
Well, they, yeah, they had a group of qualified architects to pick from, and they felt Wolf Mason was the best to suit their needs.
Okay, just so that it doesn't delay like it did with that other issue there.
Right, right.
Okay.
Kind of timeframe are you guys shooting for on this?
We, what I told him, I would love to move in there before it starts snowing, so, to which he went, whoo. Yeah. I don't mean, I don't mean Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And he put him on the spot.
We're going to put a sign, do not come into Geogah, no snow allowed.
So that, that's what our hopes, I mean, realistically, if we could get in there by the first of next year, that would be awesome.
I only ask because we want you out of here.
Well, I know.
We're looking for better neighbors.
You know, you won't have that kind of abuse so readily at hand.
Nice to be loved.
If you want abuse like that, we'll have to drive down. We all have to drive down.
Yeah, we'll have supplies out watching.
Oh, okay. All righty, if we could go ahead then with number six.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute the AIA document B101-2007, standard form of agreement owner and architect of Wolf Mason Architecture and Design, for the addition to the Chard County Engineer's Office on Mary Road in the amount of $80,100.
Some moved.
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye. Motion stands approved. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, number seven, sheriff's office.
Ready? Okay. We're making application for another funding opportunity from the Office of Criminal Justice Services for MDT's, they're also known as our mobile data terminals, they're computers in the cars. This is a, a smaller grant, we've done a couple of these in the past. This one totals $7,361.18, $6,625.7 from the Office of Criminal Justice Services. The local match will come from our law enforcement trust account, which is a fund for monies that we confiscate from bad guys, in other words, the proceeds, profits, et cetera, of criminal action. They're not allowed to keep that. We go after seizure of that money, eventual forfeiture, and we're going to use, we're going to use bad guy's money to help us out of this.
Take it on two of them?
Uh, that, could be three.
Yeah, we don't know yet.
Looking at three.
Now, these go in the cars?
Yes, sir.
How many cars do you have with them in?
Seventy-six.
Roughly.
Thirty.
Thirty cars, they already have.
Yeah. What the computers enable us to do, we do a lot of our dispatching, it comes down on airtime radio traffic. A deputy can place himself en route to a corner with a keystroke, with his obstacle. More importantly, it allows us deputies to do their reports in the car, the supervisor to read them from another car miles away, we're not driving paper around.
And they're on the streets more, instead of back in the office to...
It allows for immediate access from a crime scene to our information, as well as information from the DCI, OLE, it allows for driver's license pictures, so we can pull up people, established identity, right on the scene, as opposed to, it just makes much more efficient.
What percentage of the fleet, if you say about 30 cars, what percentage? I mean, I would think ideally you'd like to have them in all vehicles.
Within the next two years, though, they all have to be replaced.
Placed.
Because they're all running XP, and they're slow.
Okay, so they weigh with that, and so they don't support that.
We've got them in those vehicles that use it. This is an opportunity is...
It's about 40 percent of the cars, we'd just say about 40 percent. Thirty, seventy, seventy-six.
A little bit more. I mean, some don't have, obviously, a transport van or something like that.
Right.
Not as critical, but first responders, investigative units.
Plus, they take a lot of abuse, just, you know, in and out, weather changes, climate changes, so they take a beating on the news.
And vibration being in a car is not...
And they're, and they're tough books, so they're more expensive than an equivalent notebook.
We're seriously looking at different types, trying to leverage the money further.
Yeah.
You know, and certainly technology outdates itself predictably, so, you know, buying a 20-year computer doesn't make sense.
Computer will last, but the technology is changing so fast. You know, we always have solid state hard drives, and they're much faster.
Yeah.
4G, and...
And as you get more and more upgrades and capability in the software, you need a device in a car that can drive that.
Right.
Perfect. All right, if we can read number seven, then.
The sheriff's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the Office of Criminal Justice Services OCJS program award agreement 2013 JGLE 5108 for MDT replacement in the amount of $7,361.18, $6,625.7 from the Office of Criminal Justice Services OCJS, and $736.11 from the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Trust for the period February 1st, 2014 through August 31st, 2014.
Some moved.
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Motion stands approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, commissioner's office, this one here, David, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, this is just updating the payroll authorization forms reflecting the changes down in transit, and I'll be on there, Mike Casper's interim director, and Heidi, of course. And then I can even explain the second one. Katie Schaub is our payable specialist, and she's on medical leave, having had her little daughter here.
Was she brother?
No, no, she hasn't, no, I said she, she had her daughter, she hasn't had her here yet.
Sure.
This is sick. Sick.
Yes. So she's, she is exhausted, or will have exhausted her vacation, or sick pay, I'm sorry, because she's relatively new employee, so she's entitled to family medical leave due to balance of the period from the end of March through April 18th, which she's planning on coming back.
Okay, we have a motion for that, or else, actually, we could go ahead and read number eight.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the updated payroll authorization form, authorizing David, Larry, Heidi, Delaney, and Mike Casper to execute and approve payroll instead of change forms for the transit department.
Some moved.
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye, motion stands approved. And if we could do number nine also.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve unpaid family medical leave for Katie Schaub for the period March 31st, 2014 through April 18th, 2014.
Some moved.
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye, motion stands approved.
This, this next one's a little bit of housekeeping, you know, we've hired Patricia Hajma for building department, but we're also sharing her, she's being shared with the maintenance department. Trying to be efficient, but this is a little bit of language housekeeping that the orders office requires as far as processing payroll. So there's no change, it's just clarifying the terms of which is working.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, if we could read number 10.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board amend the motion for the building department from December 12, 2013, to read to approve hiring Patricia Hajma for the position of permanent coordinator, number 1106, to share duties between the building and maintenance departments to be effective December 30, 2013, at a rate of $11.21 per hour. After the successful completion of a 100-day probationary period, the rate will increase to $11.80 per hour.
Some moved.
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye, motion stands approved. Number 11, we'll have the Veteran Service Commission give us a presentation on the future of the Veterans Service Commission.
Morning. How you doing? Hi, how are you?
Morning, Joe. How are you? How you doing? Morning, Jerry. How are you?
Morning.
Good to see you. How's everything going?
Well, this is sort of new territory for us. We've all gotten together and decided that we would like to build our own building for services, like many of the other counties have done. Our area that we're at now is sort of outdated, and it's, there's just a lot of things that's not right with it as far as our veterans coming in. It's really not that ADA handicap accessible, especially if someone's in the back and there's a fire, and they have to get outfits in that area. We've got a lot of veterans coming home now, we need to service them better. We're not that visible, we're like us kept secret in Geogah County right now. So we figured that we would take our first steps in coming to the commission and see what we can work out. You know, like I said, we're just at the talking stages right now, ground level, and we would like your opinions and whatever on the situation.
Now, we're in the process of doing something for the engineer's office, and we're going to have that whole area right over here open pretty soon, and it has a ramp that goes up. I don't know, that's a pretty large area.
Yeah, our, kind of our short-term goals are, would be like, we understand we can't move quickly, but...
But I mean, for, yeah, but I was wondering if that might...
Where we would ultimately like to be, okay?
Yes.
Is out by Unmerit Road, by the, the people who we work in conjunction with when we service veterans, our job family services, that's the first place a veteran comes when he gets off the service, okay? And we work hand in hand with the senior center, of course, the hospital, and occasionally regularly, okay? So the, our long-term goals would be to possibly relocate out in that area, okay? Our short-term goals is to get more visibility and more accessibility, and we understand where this isn't going to move, you know, in six months or a year. So we'd like to try to, if something came available that was, had more visibility, that would be something we'd look into. We're kind of just throwing this out to let you know where we're kind of at here. We are not really happy with what we've got now. We have a new group of people, we have a new director this year, we have two new employees. They're energetic, they're enthusiastic, and we don't want to hamper, we want to, we want to go forward, okay? And so we came here just to kind of like open the dialogue and tell you what we've...
What about the bottom level of the senior center there? You know, who's in there now? Ravenwood?
On the bottom, the very bottom level is the seniors.
No, no, on the other side, the opposite side, on the, on the north side.
Well, the street level on the, on the, on the other side is Ravenwood.
Ravenwood, yeah.
And then they have the area above that.
Yeah, I wonder if they had any anticipations of moving, but that would be the ideal place for them, because they could go one way.
How many square feet do you figure? How, how large a facility?
Tossed around somewhere between 2,000...
2,000.
Maybe, you know, plus or minus, you know? We kind of laid out some...
Two to 3,000? I can't imagine you want less than 1,000.
No, it would, it would be cramping us a little bit, but, but as I said, we're, our long-term goals, we plan for at least 2,000 square. We would like to be, of course, handicap accessible for more, and some way of making us visible. Right now, we got, you know, we'll sign this big in the back of 470, and right now... It would basically be about the size of a small ranch house, you know, single floor. That way, we could put all of our offices, we have a conference room to, to meet those veterans when they come in to meet with us, and... We have some storage capabilities, we have to keep files, yeah, they're just like everybody else, they're sensitive files, they have to be... So we've kind of tossed it around and looked at what we have now, what we needed, but we would like to possibly incorporate, there's a state person, it's a veteran service from the state of Ohio for employment purposes. She was working out of some state at...
Sheriff's.
Job and Family Services. She's moved out of that, now she's not really in Geogah County, except moving in and out. We only, we only get her basically by appointing. We, we could, that's somebody we could afford, if we had the space, we could afford her a spot to come if, when she was here to service our clients. And basically, I think that a lot of the reason for the talking about this amongst ourselves about a month ago was that the wars in Afghanistan is supposed to start winding down in a year or so, and Ohio has one of the largest states for veterans, so there will, there will be a lot of veterans coming back, and the only way that we can service them properly would be to have an area that they could come to, like Jerry says, that's close to family services and all that area, so that we can service them, and they know where... I, I talked to a veteran at McDonald's the other day who has lived in Chardon all his life, and he's a World War II vet, he didn't know that he was there.
I didn't know you were there until I went to sign up for the VA for healthcare benefits, and I found out you were down there.
And it's hard...
Shame on me for that, but I didn't know.
Right, and it's hard because you're, you're walking through the building department. Right. And you're interrupt, I mean, they're talking back and forth all the time.
It used to be right on the square where I think Sharon Gingrich is now, Sam Parr was there.
Yes, Sam Parr was there.
Nice as a... The square doesn't offer us a lot of handicap...
No, no, at least there was, at least it was right out front.
What would be ideal is on Department of Aging, in that building, if they would, they could just...
You mentioned you want to build it?
No, they want to...
You want us to build it, or you have money to build it with, or how does that work?
We would apply, no, there's grant money out there that they can apply for.
So are we going to start investigating that? You're going to start investigating?
Right, yeah, this, this is what I say, this is ground level. We have to move forward with your cooperation, we don't want to, we don't want to... We don't want to do under the table, or make you feel that we're trying to do something else. We want to try to, you know, if you had some alternative available, certainly we'll look into them.
Well, we're going to start looking for you.
And, but we, biggest, first thing we need to do is get out of the back corner and get some, some visibility and some recognizability, not, not the best kept secret.
I think once you're there, it's...
This, this new generation of veterans, can remember when you and I served in John in World War II, wasn't a commitment to a job. These guys took on, men and women took on employment, okay, in the military, as a volunteer army, okay? Different than when I served.
Yeah.
Now, they're going to be, we're going to have, the Defense Department expects a big riff of reduction in force, and those are people who had a long-term commitment and now have no job, basically, okay? Not that we aren't getting better, things, our climate is getting better, our opportunities are getting better, but we're, we're going to have a pool of people that need service. You know, you went for a, for a long time with a relatively small workload, or new people coming back, just to have a constant thing, where now you could be facing a large, a large number of people coming back in, and... Our numbers have increased steadily, even though our number of veterans is actually going down. But our number of people coming back for claims in today's day and age is not, you know, if you're entitled to it, they're going to get it, you know? It's, those programs are absolutely necessary, we have a lot of, we created a whole thing with better healthcare and better knowledge and technology, and we have more better surviving, okay? And some of them are coming back with tremendous injuries and tremendous service needs.
You know, one of the things, if the, when engineers do move out, that area's going to be open, but the other thing is, we got these big signs out front that we don't have anything on, you know? I mean, for temporary, certainly, we could put that on that sign, Veterans Services here, you know, or...
Long-term goals are something else.
Yeah, but, you know, of course, we can, okay? Yeah, but, you know, of course, we gotta, okay?
You know, if I could just add to this, I think that, um, I think that the, my personal position on it is this, is that I think that, that, I think that they should, the, the Veteran's Service Commission and just, um, across the board for the county, I think that we need to have a, a freestanding structure that, that's done right. And, and I, I think that if we can't turn around and give, give back to the service members and give them a nice quality place, I think we're missing the mark. And I, I just, I think that we need to have something that's, that's a good fit for this county and a good fit for the veterans that serve this, this, this country. And I think it's important that we, we keep that in, 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 in perspective of what the priorities are, because the fact that what we got today is because of the people who have served this country. So I think that, I think that a, a good, well-done, freestanding structure that represents what, you know, America stands for and what our military stands for is, is critical. And I think that our veterans deserve better. And, and I, I think that in addition to that, I think it should be done in a, in a way that also, you know, appeals to the, you know, upcoming generations, you know? Just having a, a, a building, just to have an office to say that this is the Veteran's Service Commission and hang a sign on the door, I think we're shortchanging ourselves. And I think we're shortchanging the veterans that have served and the future generations of people to come. And I think that the reality is, is I think that we've got a tremendous opportunity to do this, to do this right and do this right once, you know? Even for the position of possibly looking at this of bringing on, you know, recruiting stations, you know, like I, I talked to the Marine recruiter, he comes into our store, you know, weekly, you know? And, and basically what they do is, is, you know, they don't have a home base to per se close, so they're just, you know, they want, you know, they wander around our store just waiting for time to go on before he goes and talks to somebody else. But to be able to have that, to promote, you know, veterans, to go, to promote the, the military service, I think that as generations come, we're losing that more and more and more. And I, I think that even if, to, to build this with the potential of having actual recruitment stations, that, you know, design where they, you know, you can have all of your branches of military service to actually have an office within that structure, being able to say, hey, you know what? The kids from, you know, Cardinal High School or Berkshire or, you know, Ledgemont, West Georgia, you know? And, and bring them in there, have possibly a display of, you know, the, as, as military uniforms have transitioned, almost to the point of even having like a, an actual little museum. Something that, 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 you know, it bothers me a lot. I, I go to the Memorial Day Parade, I go to just all, all the different parades. And, and I sit there, I take my daughter every time, because I think it's important to establish that understanding of pride and, and, and what somebody has given up to give what we have today. And, and it makes me sick to see less and less and less and less people participating in this. And I think that ultimately, we have a duty, and I think that we have a position in this. And, and I, I just tell you that as far as my position is that, you know, Veteran's Service Commission in Georgia County has done, I think, a great job as far as, you know, preservation of funds. I mean, every year, we have gotten money back to us based on some, the, the benefits in which, you know, have been given out. I think that, you know, we don't have a, a, a lot of, of waste. I think that the, the department has run fairly aggressive and fairly to the point. And I, I think that if, if we can't look out for the veterans, I think that we're losing total focus. And I just, I, I, I'm 100% in support of a freestanding structure. And I agree with Jerry too, you know, as far as being down on, by the hospital, by Jobs and Family Services, by all those services, by the sheriff's office, whatever, it's just it gives that area, there's a memorial there, there's everything that, that needs to be there. I just think that it, it comes to the bottom line that my position is, is I'll, I'll support, I'll support you guys with, with, with a, a good solid move to, to make this thing stick in, in futures to come. And I just say that, you know, don't shortchange, let, let's not shortchange the residents of this county. And, and let's just, you know, I mean, I'm not saying that we should go crazy and build a 10,000-foot structure, but 2,000, let's build it to serve the future, you know? And, and let's build it to, you know, that, that's gonna fit our needs today and tomorrow, because it's always cheaper to do it now than to try to look down the road. And, and too many times, people make mistakes and just have this vision rather than, than this. And I, I just, I support you guys, and I think you all know that. But it's, it's a situation where I, I support all the veterans and, and all the, all the positions that they've taken. And, and I support our youth to, to make sure that they have some instill of, of military service in them and, and, and the pride that goes along with it, so...
I jotted down some things here, and I want you or your members to add to this. And you're talking about a two to three thousand square foot, that's a minimum, in my opinion. I mean, it's, that's, that's...
No, we didn't wanna come here with high...
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't think you need 30,000 square feet, but I, I, uh, uh, that's the minimum number. You'd like it in a central location, near the other services, all right? It would be, uh, it, it needs to be in a visible location so people see it. And I put down it needs to be a respectful building near the memorial, in that, in that area. Because if it's near the memorial, it, it meets the other criteria. Is there anything I'm missing?
We, we...
Indoor parking or anything like that?
We're not gonna put a parking garage.
Yeah, I just, uh, is there something I'm missing in there?
No, we, you know, we tossed out the square footage as a, as a minimum. We, we need, of course, to have, we, we don't build without ADA compliance, so that's not a problem. We, a one-story freestanding structure and light installation is, is the perfect solution, because it's, it gives us an identity of that building being serving better, okay? End of conversation.
So this would be maybe like, say, the location down here affords you office space.
Right.
Primarily, that's it.
A roof over our head, right.
Right, would it be advantageous, you know, depending on cost, that you had a meeting, like a large group meeting room in there? I mean, do you have occasion to...
We have, we have a meeting room currently, which we utilize just for our board meetings, okay? And to interview clients. That doesn't have to be real big, but it does, if we're gonna make it a little bit of a multipurpose type arrangement, then a bigger area would be better, okay?
I mean, I didn't know if you have occasion to bring in...
Yes.
Numbers of, of veterans for a program or people that may be, you don't have that obligation.
Tomorrow, we're going to Summit County.
Just so you go and get it, yeah.
Tomorrow, we're going to Summit County to meet with, having their host, the Summit County Veteran's Services Commission is hosting training for all of us in the northeast quadrant of the state. They're gonna do it in their new building that they just built recently.
Which is huge.
That just, where it happened to come up.
Unbelievable, so...
Are there strings on the grant money that you would be able to get that would require you to be the property owner, owner?
I, we, you know, you...
We're not owning the property, but I mean, we're not required to sign over a lot to you folks to...
I don't think we've gotten to that quite that far along, but I'm sure...
This was, like I said, this is the beginning stages. We wanted to meet with you to let you know what we would like to have.
So you're gonna look into funding and...
We'll kind of some of the stuff, but we didn't, you know, we wanna, we wanna do it with cooperation with you guys in mind and what, you know?
We just didn't want you all hearing it from someone off the street and then, you know, say, hey, what's wrong with the commission? How come they haven't contacted us on this? So we wanted just to, to meet with all of you so that you can know what our basic ideas.
But if something, if short-term came up that was better than what we have now, we sure would come and move some back.
I think, I think we could say that we all concur that we wanna help the veterans and we know that what you've done for us in the past. And we all have family members, my brother's gone, he served in Vietnam, and neither brother did. I do, I do feel very strongly about the veterans. And I think, you know, you, you start the, the process of looking for, you know, the funding and even if we match it, I think it would be worth it, as, as Ralph has said, and Blake.
You're not gonna get an argument from me?
No argument. I mean, we, we stand with...
I am one. So is David.
And David, yeah.
See, I think, like you were saying earlier, that the, the awareness of people just doesn't seem to be there for veterans at, at parades and stuff anymore. But if, if we had our own building like that, something that we could be proud of,
Oh, yeah.
That, that citizens could even see when they drive by, you know, it would, it would...
I think, I think it's a great idea, what Commissioner Spitalary talked about, instilling this pride in young people, 'cause I just, I've had this sense over the years, unfortunately, a lot of the guidance that young people get in our schools, a lot of times, those guidance counselors have no connection to the military and are not even discussing it as a very viable option for young people, to be able to serve their country, learn a skill, get money for college later on. It's very viable, but I don't think the kids are really hearing it. So if you come up with some kind of facility where you have that kind of community pride, you know, raise that awareness that, you know, it's an honorable thing and it's something that Americans should do.
Well, you know, our parents knew what those in World War II, those who had really saved the world from the worst dictators possible, Hitler, Mussolini, Stalin. I mean, all of those things, we heard about it when we grew up. And then when our generation, we went to Vietnam, I mean, I remember my brothers, you know, three, four-year stints, and I remember what they did and what they went to. But my children, when I mention it to them, they go, they just look at you with a stare. I mean, they don't know the sacrifices that were given, that people gave the ultimate sacrifice of their lives to, to make this country for that freedom, 'cause as we know, freedom's not free. And I think we all feel that way. We're very strong on that. So let's start looking.
Yeah, I think, thank you for coming, by the way, and, yeah, this is...
It's a good thing.
Past due.
Yeah, I think if you, you know, if you have, you know, a second thought that comes up, we'd, we'd love to hear it. You know, if you, if you guys have got a suggestion.
Certainly interim, we might be able to do something that will at least get you moving.
Even, even, you know, property out in that area.
There's a lot.
If we know what size property that we could use, then we would know whether we could make our building a little bigger to, you know? Take care of it.
Yeah, I mean, we can figure out a way to make it fit. I guess the thing I'd encourage you to do, you know, we're gonna be starting the annual budget process for next year or the next month or so.
Next budget.
So we can try and come up with some kind of basic ideas of size and budget and all of that. We can incorporate that into our planning for next year and have the means, have the money set aside for that.
And we can continue to, to do that now, that we, you know, that we have all your blessings. And we can continue up the road now in dealing with grant money and how much, you know, we can get and all that, so we could present that to you, so...
Is there a facility that you're aware of, maybe in another county? Or something that has a, a building that really impresses you or that you would like? Because I have a pet peeve, we just did it with the Engineers Department, and, hi Joe, how are you? Where such a huge, such a huge portion of any budget or any project goes to the architectural firm that designs the whole thing. And I keep, I just had this discussion with Mr. Lehrer this morning, isn't there someplace, you know, you walk through the, the shopping center and pick up home plans in a magazine and send him some hundreds of dollars, and they send you a bunch of rolls of stamped drawings? And I'm like, is there a facility that, that, that meets or would meet your requirements, build in another county or someplace that you go, you know, that's really a nice place? And, and we could possibly, you know?
Piggyback on them.
Yeah, piggyback, you know, pay them something. It's not free, but you'd have to pay the architect something, but, and how they would adapt it to our site.
Right.
But to save a 10% cost or 15% cost on just the, the site work, because there might be something that's done already that we could...
We're gonna pick Summit County's brains on Thursday, I know that. And we're gonna look at their building, and we're gonna, I know Michelle has, has, has talked to some of them about how, how they approached their funding and got their building built. So, yes, we're not gonna try to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to be a more practical kind of guy. If you want a one-of-a-kind, we're gonna get your wallet out. If you want something that's ple, you know, respectful, pleasant, functional, somebody might have one out there that, that is adaptable to our site at a, at a cost savings.
And, and this is something that, that I, I would like to do myself is to contact Michelle, who knows pretty much all the new buildings that have been built over, say, the last 10 years or so. And I can actually, 'cause I'm retired, I can actually go and drive down to these other counties and see what their building is, see if it's what's similar to what we want, so that we can, we can do that. So we've got a lot of homework that, that we're gonna be doing now over the next couple of months in, in that respect, building-wise, financial-wise, and all that stuff. But like I, like I said, we just wanted to come, come to you and, and get your blessing.
I just have a visual of some cohantatahs.
We can get those through the military...
Make it look like a military barracks.
Military, uh, artillery.
Blast walls, right?
Yeah, sandbags around the bottom, eighty-four, fifty feet.
Like the 101st bomb down by the airport, you know how they have that rest garage?
I'm sorry, I, I...
With the generators outside, with the pipes coming in to heat it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a little bit of post-syndrome.
The new army's changed so much.
Set the drones out.
It's, they're really, they're amazing, so, yeah. These kids, they're men and women, are, you know, so technical. Their social media, we have to, we have to start to adjust ourselves into their world of, you know, and we do.
Let's serve a life.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Support? No, I just, okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate seeing you, Josh.
Thank you.
Jerry, good seeing you too.
Good seeing you.
Thank the rest of you for coming in.
All right, well, that brings us to the acknowledgements that the month, the financial report from our Building Department was filed for February. Then we also had the County Dog Order Report that was filed for ending February 26th. And then for meetings this, this week, we have a Funding Commission meeting, it's been canceled. Mary?
Yeah, I saw that.
I noticed right after we turned the other day.
On the 13th, Commissioners will hold regular sessions, and we'll include a public hearing at 10:10 a.m. regarding the Department on Aging's application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the 2014 Specialized Transportation Program Grant. On the 17th, Family First Council, 2 p.m. at Jobs and Family Services. On the 18th, we're gonna have a 9:45, so 15 minutes before the meeting starts. Imagine the treasurer will be here to give a investment report. And on the 18th, Commissioners will hold regular session. On the 24th, the Board of Revision, 9 a.m. at the Auditor's Office, I'll be attending that. On the 25th, the Commissioners will hold regular session. And on the 27th, the Commissioners will hold our second night meeting, it's at 6:30 p.m. And the only other thing that we may have is on the Thursday...
14th, Ralph, the NOACA meetings, there's a, a number of subcommittee meetings on the 14th.
Okay, so on the 14th, so NOACA, subcommittee meetings, and I believe that's Executive Committee too?
Yeah, of executive, finance, governance.
And then also, possibly on Thursday, we will be in Port, or Trumbull County for...
At 1:30?
Solid Waste, at 1:30.
Oh, oh, is that this 13th?
So that's not finalized, but the possibility, we'll be there.
Yes, I'm waiting for...
Skip, with respect, I've not seen any movement on the NUACC or the NOACA resolution. I believe that there's a revolution, resolution floating around. But I, it was my understanding, based on our past meetings, that we were gonna have that in open session meeting, as it should be, it's appropriate.
Right, and so... Are we gonna address on Thursday? We're gonna address that on Thursday, and I believe that there's some changes that are being redone again as far as there's been some drafts that have been produced, but nothing has been finalized. So we'll have, we'll have something on Thursday.
Yeah, one of them's pretty close.
We have two resolutions, and one is completed and through legal.
Yeah.
The second one is...
Is a simple one, isn't it?
At, at the prosecutor's office, just to get a, their blessing.
That is on the loan program, or the SIB loan program?
That's done.
That's done.
That one's done.
That one's done.
So it's the Neo, the Neo set, or whatever the...
The NUACC one is being worked on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, would you mind sharing that with me?
Well, the idea is we don't want to be part of it. We don't want, we want it stricken from...
We don't have a problem, but once it's cleared, we're there.
We don't want it to apply to us.
Okay, I actually forwarded to Ralph last night a presentation, which I will forward to you guys, with specific extracted paragraphs that are in the policy statements. You may not have seen those, those are good through the...
Well, we saw the one on page 84. We've gone through them all.
We saw the one that, you know, endorses vibrant Ohio old 24s.
But all the rest of them have been taken out, with the exception of that one.
There, there are some more challenging ones than that.
Send me a copy of that.
And so I'll send, I'll send a copy to each of you.
Send a copy to us, yeah.
And I, I also included the statement made by, I forget her name, the district manager for HUD, in which she's made the comment in a public meeting that, you know, we've now taken control of northeastern Ohio, and so now we can just move forward. And so that is the nature of what NUACC is about. And it's very, very important that everybody understand who they are, what they're about, and that they're about to be institutionalized unless people push back on NOACA.
Right, Skip, so let me interrupt you. So the position that, that, that I'm looking at doing is this, I looked at your PowerPoint this morning. It, I, I wanna talk to you about it, because I think it's just a little bit too lengthy. I'd like to try to reduce it a little bit if we can. I just, you know, if, and my position is that I will put you on the agenda for, for maybe our nighttime meetings so that we could have some public interaction. But we're gonna have to do something to reduce the size of it a little bit, because it's just, it's gonna be too lengthy, and I just don't wanna take that amount of time, so...
I think it would be better served...
But the challenge gets to be, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, the challenge gets to be that Friday is our opportunity in the Executive Committee to push back.
Well, I believe Thursday, we're going to... Well, I believe Thursday, we're going to address the, both of those, both of those issues. And our position is going to be is no to the NUSEC and also to the other position that we have on the loans.
You know, I think you'd be more effective to give that PowerPoint to the organization.
Well, I would love to do that. I've asked.
Well, that was last year.
So if you can make that happen, I would love to do that.
I think you'd be far more effective than.
And I'm more than willing to sit down with the three county commissioners.
I'd like to see the presentation.
Or individuals, whatever, to work through and refine that to your comfortable.
I guess if you're going to do it for them, and I guess, Mary, if you have the ability to put him on the agenda for them.
Yeah, I have that ability, so.
I think it's credible to put our position out there, but.
I think that'd be more effective.
If, if that's the case, I just, I think that you're going to lose some people during the amount of time of it. I think you need to hit on some of the main points that I, that I looked at. It's going to probably just draw too long time.
No, no, and I appreciate it. Again, it was a draft.
And I think, I mean, I've talked to a lot of the folks.
It's not the final lines presentation, it's a presentation.
Yeah, but I've talked to a lot of the folks, and I really feel, I don't have a problem with that presentation. I mean, you showed me one last year. Remember you showed it?
Yeah, that was an NUSEC thing, this is NOACA specific. NOACA has put policy statements in, they're trying to institutionalize it.
Well, I thought we were, okay, all right.
So when do you feel that we could get him to present on there for everybody?
I think the next meeting. I mean, I have to find out if I get on there, but we will get it on there.
Are you talking Friday or?
No, no, that isn't the big thing.
Quarterly board meeting you're talking about.
It's April. But I'm thinking that you could address that, and at that meeting where you have everybody.
The board meeting. Well, see, the only challenge that we need to politically, again, just my opinion, we need to somehow politically play this, because that board meeting will be about, on those policies.
No, not until everybody, one thing that Grace has made real clear, and I believe her, is until everyone agrees, she, they're not putting these policies in place. And I have asked her to remove every knee ass. Well, then Dave came up with that one that you had there.
Yeah.
Now, I know we're one, and I said, I'd like that removed. I mean, and I have gone through it, but I think, I really think you need to give that presentation, whether they like it or not.
Well, I mean, that's fine. Again, I could sit down with you, Mary, and go over it to your comfortable meeting.
Let's do that. And, you know, like I said, you know, there's a way to present, there's a way to present. You know what I'm talking about.
There's none at all, I think that's perfect.
Why don't we do that? I will work for that on behalf of our board, and, you know, everyone who, when you're, when you're in that, that role, you have that chance to do that. And I feel we should do that.
I'm going to look forward to seeing resolutions on Thursday.
Yeah, those are coming.
And I think, can we have the complete resolution? I mean, oftentimes in our resolutions.
Yeah.
If it's on the agenda, you'll skip it, right?
You're going to talk to Laura this afternoon or this morning, yet I have no problem, I just asked Ralph, he doesn't, I don't know about there. We get the resolution back through legal.
Yeah.
I got no problem forwarding the two onto you, and you can review them. I got no problem, because we're going to vote on them, on, I mean, it's public record when she gets done with it.
Right.
Whether you agree or don't agree, I think that both sides should always be heard. I've always felt strongly.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And, you know, I could not control, but I have a little more leverage now. Not much, but I do, because, you know, that's the, what's afforded to you as a courtesy.
Well, the challenge gets to be in the WACA, we know this, you know, we're three votes out of 44, so when you say both sides be heard.
Hey, listen, you had to be there with the Avon Lake interchange, when that went in, you had to be there. I mean, you talk about war.
So we'll get that over to you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we have any other.
Do you want to add to that on transit?
Yeah, you're going to do, we're going to do something with the transit.
Are you going to talk about that?
Yeah.
Well, I sent to all three of you an email.
Well, I don't know if I got that.
Well, I sent it out yesterday afternoon. There's one firm that has done work, organization review work for the engineer, new engineer when he took over last year.
To organize.
Just to review the organization.
Who is that?
Clemens Nelson.
Okay, Clemens Nelson.
I've also talked to ODOT Division of Transit, just to see if they have anybody they've worked with that has expertise. And they've given me a couple mains as well. So I guess, you know, a few folks would be interested in having at least, you know, Clemens Nelson for starters come in, just talk briefly about how they do this.
Another thing I would suggest, you know, I have a lot of respect for Joe Calabrese. He runs the RTA in Cleveland, and he really runs a great show there. And, you know, they may have some ideas, because they had, you know, I don't know, maybe that's too heavy duty.
There are probably as many places that do this as.
Well, he came from New York suburbs.
Right, and I don't know, I just.
I don't know if we're in that category.
I think we need to, to.
Yeah.
Agree publicly that, as we said, we believe that having the entire operation looked at, is that fair to say?
I think it's fair.
I mean, is it fair to say?
Well, you had a director there for nearly 10 years, and it's healthy to have a fresh set of eyes professionally, take a look at.
Well, it's not our field of expertise, any of us here, I don't think. I don't want to speak for somebody correctly.
So Clemens Nelson?
Clemens Nelson.
Okay, so you're going to get some kind of a.
Well, they would be willing to come in and talk, talk to you folks about their methodology and how they would do it.
I know that it's next door.
And I'll contact the other two agencies that ODOT mentioned.
Uh huh.
And, you know, develop some.
Hey, well, Joe's still back there. Joe, do you have anything to add? Was this firm agreeable with your?
Oh, yeah, Clemens Nelson.
Were they good?
Was excellent to deal with. They're out of Columbus, but they do specialize in personnel and organizations and, you know, government's obviously different to deal with personnel and how things can and can't be done. You know, Ralph's experience with his company, if he has a problem with an employee, he pretty much can just deal with it.
Yeah, but you're owner.
In government, that's not true. Yeah, and so, so you have to be more cautious, not only with how you deal with employees, but even, you know, interreorg and so forth like that. They were, they were excellent, they really were. They couldn't have been more accommodating to us than, very professional. I couldn't, nothing would have been.
And I think that's important, because we, we want to make sure.
So, I mean, with the board's permission, I can, I can find some times we might be available to come and talk to you, but I wouldn't want to explore a couple other firms too, so we're looking at a couple providers, not just one.
Exactly. I don't have a problem with, with looking at multiple people and going with whoever. I only use that one because we know we have a recommendation from, from somebody that we can just make his life miserable later on.
He sends us down the wrong trail. Hi, Joe.
Later on, we'll roll today. What show? Would that be the Highland Trail?
Oh, don't go weird.
So with that, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So move. This lady here?
I wasn't on the agenda, but I wondered if I could make a comment.
Sure.
My name's Susan Daniels. I live on Twing Road. I've been there for 15 years. For the first time, I had to go to the county to the HEAP program. I have, I have my own company. However, since the Obama administration got in, business has fallen off by 80%. So this year, when I was running low on propane.
Ah.
For the, for the month of January, I ordered propane 200 gallons, and it was just under $900 for 200 gallons. I thought, I'm going to be out in a month. I know I can't afford this. So I went to HEAP. I have never gone to a governmental agency in my entire life. And so it was humiliating to go to start with. I went there, and because I just had a delivery, I was told by the woman in charge of the program, very nice woman named Melissa Helm, she said, well, you just got a delivery, so I can't even look at your documents. Because I had brought with me everything I needed as proof that I qualified for the program. She says, well, I'm, I'm not even look at these because you, you just got a delivery. And I said, I'm going to run out. And she said, well, just call and make an appointment again. So I was a little annoyed, because I thought, I'm already here, everything's ready, just copy it and keep it. No, it didn't work that way. So when I called, when I ran out, I tried to, I called Thrifty Propane, you know, they said, oh, yeah, seven to 10 days. I said, you know what, I'm down to 20% now. They always told me to call at 20%. And they said, well, you're going to, it's going to be seven to 10 days. I said, I'm going to be out of propane. And in one day, it dropped from 20 to 10, because it had been so cold. All right, I then called HEAP again to make an appointment, and nobody answers the phone at Family Services. You, you get the, you get the main person answering, and then they divert you to somebody else who, you always get the voicemail. You never get a person answering the phone. I got a call back the next day and got an appointment for last week. It took me almost a week to get an appointment. Now, I ran out of propane last Tuesday. When I went on Thursday, I explained to her that I had, for two days already, I had no heat in my house. And she said, well, you're going to have to take this thing and call one of our providers, which is AmeriGas and JP and somebody else. And she said, set up an account. Now, I was there at 8 o'clock Thursday morning to meet with her. I called back by 9:20, because I had called AmeriGas and made the arrangements. All she needed to do was fill out a one-page document with my name and account number and fax it to them. Well, so I, I called AmeriGas and I said, do I need to do anything else after I give her the account number? And they said, no, we will call you when we get it. Well, at 12:30, I called and said, have you gotten it yet? And they said, no, we have not heard from her. I tried to call her three times, three times, she never answered the phone. I called AmeriGas back at four, almost 4 o'clock, and said, have you heard from her yet? Now, keep in mind, by 9:20 in the morning, she had my information. And they said, no. Well, then I called the Council on Aging, and I talked to somebody named Adam, who.
Adam Fox.
He is the star of Jogga County. He, he was just wonderful. He said, let me try. He, he tried to call her, he called me back, he said, I was not able to get hold of her. I left her a message, I explained that I would appreciate if she would take care of this. I heard from her about 9:30 the next morning, saying, oh, everything's been taken care of. Well, because it was Friday, AmeriGas could not send somebody out until yesterday, which they did. But in the meantime, on Saturday morning, the temperature in my house was 44 degrees. You know, she's, Melissa Helm is a very nice woman, who is not doing a very nice job. And I challenge any of you to call her.
Melissa Helm.
In fact, let me give you her phone number.
Okay.
But when you call, don't use the county line, because maybe they have caller ID. I want you to see.
Okay.
That she never answers the phone.
Does this job at Family Services?
Yeah.
She is in charge of the HEAP program.
She's in charge of the HEAP program.
Right. And her number is.
She's going to get three class.
285.
285.
9141, 1269. And this is the.
Is that her extension?
That's her, that's her.
This is the document she had to fax to AmeriGas. All it included was her filling in my name and the account number. And had that been done, I would have had heat on Friday instead of freezing for two more days.
Now, did, did what happened now, when you got your gas delivered, was it under the HEAP program?
Yes.
But you're telling us what you had to go through to get to this point.
Yes, yes. And not only was it, was I not comfortable even going and asking for help, because I've never done it my entire life, but to be so, treated in such a cavalier manner. I mean, there was no excuse not for her to take the information the first time I went there. And then when I went the second time, and she said, well, now you have to get this, you know, you get an account from AmeriGas. And I said, you know, it would have been helpful if you would have told me this the first time I came. She said, well, I don't remember you coming before.
I would think you would be a memorable person.
Because I'm so loud.
I would think you'd be memorable.
And she said, she had no recollection.
What I'm going to do, I'm going to be uploading the video when the meeting ends, and I'll have it posted probably in the next couple hours. I'm going to call Tim Taylor, who's the executive director of JFAS, and I'm going to ask him to watch the end of the meeting, to hear all this.
Does she have your number?
And then he'll report back to me about what we need to do to fix it.
Does Melissa Helm have? She has your number?
Oh, I'm sure she does. I left it a whole bunch of times.
Wow.
I, you know, I was told that it, Jobs and Family Services is just a problem in general about trying to get through, that it, that it, that it could stand a great deal of improvement.
Well, I mean, the issue is, you know, since you referred to the change in administration and what's happened to the economy, you know, that, this, I know this is an adequate excuse, but the explanation is, that agency has been slammed by greatly increased needs, and we have not had the funding to staff up to be able to answer it.
Oh, I understand that.
The way we'd like to see it answered.
I am.
So it's an issue.
But the, the fact that it was, it wasn't like I was asking for money, where a day or two wouldn't have mattered. The fact is, I was already out of propane.
Right.
And needed it.
Right.
And because she did not do her job, I had to wait the entire weekend. And fortunately, AmeriGas came out yesterday and did, you know, did everything they were supposed to do. But I'll tell you what, I'll never go back there again, so, you know.
What's your full name again?
It's Susan Daniels.
Okay. Okay, I got you. Wow. Well, it has been a terrible weather, and no one should be sitting in their house in Jogga County for three days with no.
Oh, it's not, it was from Tuesday till yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a week.
A week.
I'll get you folks to answer.
Do they have a gas line down there on Twing? There's no gas line through there?
I'm at the, down toward the bottom of the hill, almost to six.
Almost to six there? I know where you are.
There's, there's.
There's no gas line.
Yeah, you came to my house when you were first running for office.
I remember you, I remember you look familiar.
And you were wearing a red jacket that day.
Well, and I still have that red jacket.
Heck of a memory.
Good memory.
I was going to say, you need to get a job for these places in the background.
They don't remember me, but they remember the red jacket.
I remembered, I remembered you because I was so impressed that you were going door to door to introduce yourself. And I was so impressed. I don't vote for politicians unless I know about them, because I don't want to cause harm where none needs to be. And I was so impressed that I, you got my vote.
Well, it's tough, we all like to meet our residents, but I really think a week without heat is, I can't even imagine what that would be like. Although, although, do you remember when our electricity went out, and we were without heat for two, do you remember that?
For two and a half days.
Two, we were gone without two and a half weeks and months. I bet you.
Oh, that's a while back.
Well, not that far back. I lost all my freezer food, I lost, I lost everything.
That's why I bought an emergency generator.
Yeah, that's what we did. But you have to use that on propane though, don't you?
Yes.
So if you're out of propane, you're out.
Yes, I'm out of everything.
Wow. So that propane lasts one month?
The 200 gallons lasted less than a month.
Oh, my God.
And they were charging at that time, $4 a gallon.
You have one?
That's bad, too.
Yeah, I don't understand, with natural gas being so reasonable to.
Well, they, they have to be able to afford to run the line, that's the problem. If the houses are spread out.
Right, exactly.
They're not, it's not profitable for them to extend the line.
And that's right, but they.
All right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody. Good conversation.